Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting, February 15th, 2018. Excuse me, not 2015, 2015 is on my agenda now, so it's Feb...I was gonna say man. It's like now-hog day. February 22nd. Councilman Bill Shacklet has the prayer and the pledge.
And we'll pray for our mayor tonight.
Yeah, please. I want to introduce someone to you, a new face to an organization that's been very active in our community. Bill, would you come to the podium? This is Bill Ronsley, and he is the new Chief Executive Officer of Greenhouse Ministries. Bill, just maybe introduce yourself, and then would you do the opening prayer for us?
Sure. Thanks for that. I appreciate the time coming for you tonight. My wife and I live over in the Casey and Lane area. I would normally come here and complain about traffic, but the mayor has put me straight now. We're originally from Massachusetts. I come from the area where we talk funny, she comes from the area where they talk normal. We've come by way of Tennessee, by way of Rhode Island, California, and Texas. Been here for 18 years. I was president of a manufacturing company here. In the last 10 years did business consulting and have been in many startup, partnering in startup companies. More recently, this January, I took on the role of Chief Executive Officer at Greenhouse Ministry. Greenhouse Ministry, we're focused on the working poor, if you would, low income. We basically, we help them, we educate, and we connect, changing lives through the process to bring in stability, and give them education, and connecting them to the next step. My role there now is to bring some stability to the structure, the organizational structure, reinforce the vision, and then to build capacity to meet the growing needs of the community. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, you said that we are to pray for those in authority. So I come tonight representing all the citizens of Murfreesboro, and all those that are visiting. And I ask you, Father, on behalf of all of us, to bless these men and women tonight. Bless the mayor, the vice mayor, the city council, and all those involved. Father, we just thank you that it is your will that they come, that they bring order to this city, that they bring, that they're elected to bring those things which are good and rightful in your ways. Father, I thank you that you said to ask for wisdom, and you give it to us. So I ask, on behalf of all the citizens tonight, to give these men and women wisdom as they ponder those things that they may, that come before them tonight. I ask you, Father, in the name of Jesus, to give them ears to hear, eyes to see, and a heart that's receptive to the truth. You said that the city would be exalted by the blessing of the righteous, so we exalt this city by asking you to bless it tonight. Father, I thank you that everything that comes before this committee, this city council tonight, in this chamber, will bring glory and honor to you in everything that is said and done. Thank you that every bit of business that comes to you is done with orderly, dignity, and justice. And we thank you for all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one ceremonial item tonight. Ms. Melanie Fogg is here. She's the area coordinator for Greenheart Exchange. They're a nonprofit for placing exchange students. She is a government scholarship student that's in the Flex program who attends Blackman High School. Is part of the Flex, which stands for Future Leaders Exchange Program. The students are required to do some enhancement activities to see government in action. She lives with her host family in Murfreesboro for a year. So Melanie, we wanted, I know you've got a couple people that you want to introduce, and want to welcome you to the city council tonight.
Yes, thank you. I have with me Yeva Kechayan, which I'm not saying her last name correctly, but she is from Armenia. And then she also brought along her host sister, Mia Yuminda, who's also an exchange student from Japan, who is, they are both with the same host family. So part of the Flex requirements are that they give back 40 hours of community service while they're here. And our, even our normal Greenheart students, we require them to give back to their communities with service. So, and as part of the Flex program, they're required to get involved in some enhancement activities that introduces them to government in action. So, we thought since she lives in Murfreesboro, this would be a great opportunity for her to do that. And we're also gonna get her down to the state capitol soon, so. And we are always needing host families for these great kids, so I encourage any of you who want to host to contact us through our website at greenheartexchange.org. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you for coming. Thank you both for being here on this meeting, February 22nd of 2018. We're glad you are here. All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there anything that you need to pull off the consent agenda?
Hearing no changes, I'll move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have second readings. We have a letter from the Assistant Planning Director, ordinance 170Z46, regarding zoning of an area along Jürgen Road, simultaneous with annexation. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. We have our second reading tonight for the Magnolia Grove PRD. There were a couple of reasons why the second reading was delayed. You'll recall, we had the first reading for the zoning back on October 12th, and we also had the public hearing for the annexation petition and plan of services that night. The annexation petition and plan of services was approved, and the zoning was approved on first reading. The annexation does not go into effect until the zoning goes into effect, so the annexation is being, is being held off until the zoning. One of those reasons is because the existing single-family home on the property, we could not provide fire protection to it, because the water lines were inadequate to do so. So, the city council, it was agreed upon on October 12th that we would delay second and final reading of the zoning until such time as that house had been removed or demolished. We confirmed last month that the house had been demolished, and went to the site and were able to confirm that. The other thing was, there was discussion at the public hearing on October the 12th regarding drainage, and Mr. Taylor, the design engineer on the project, representing the developer, was tasked with providing a drainage report on the existing drainage conditions on the property. And that was delivered to the city council members last month, late last month, I believe, to give you adequate time to review that. So with that being said, if you have any questions for Mr. Taylor, he is here, answer them about his existing drainage condition report. And Mr. Sam Huddleston, our Assistant City Engineers, is here if you have any questions for him. We do need to consider this matter on second and final reading tonight. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any questions?
I appreciate the work that was put into bringing the report to us by staff, and by the developer, and by Mr. Taylor. I appreciate the work that went into this. I'll move for, we move for approval on second read.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 170Z46, the zoning area located along Jürgen Road is planned residential development PRD district simultaneous with annexation.
That's what we just did.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You just didn't get to read it.
Yeah. We'll move to new business. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH02, adopted by the city council on January 25th, 2018, conduct a public hearing to consider amending Murfreesboro City Code Appendix A zoning pertaining to maximum gross density and open space requirements in RSA Type II and RSA Type III zoning districts. Murfreesboro Planning Development applicant notices said public hearing was published in the February 6th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper.
Donald.
Good evening. I'm Donald Anthony with the Planning Department. This zoning ordinance revision has three components, and I'll cover all of those just briefly. They're all related to the recently created RSA Type II and Type III zoning districts. First, Chart 2 of the zoning ordinance currently shows the maximum density for townhouses in the RSA Type II and Type III districts as 21.5 dwelling units per acre. With this revision, that would be reduced to 12 dwelling units per acre. Second, the revision would add an end note to Chart 2 to clarify that the minimum lot area and lot width requirements for townhouses in both RSA Type II and Type III would apply to developments where each townhouse is recorded on its own lot of record. And third, this revision would amend End Note 33 of Chart 2 to indicate that minimum open space requirements in the RSA Type II district apply to all townhouse developments regardless of size. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing for this item on January 10th. There were no public comments, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. Staff can answer any questions either before or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, we'll need to hold a public, or a public hearing on this code amendment. If you will, if anyone's wishing to speak for or against, if you would always come to the podium, if you would make your comments to the city council, if you'll state your name and address for the record, we'll get any questions answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of yourself, we'd like to limit that to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll get five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18002, amending Appendix A zoning Chart 2 and Chart 2 end notes, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratio to maximum gross density and open space requirements in RSA Type II and RSA Type III zoning districts.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH04, adopted by the city council on January 25th, 2018, will need to conduct a public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to approximately 5.6 acres in the planned commercial development PCD district located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road, Northfield Village PCD. Scott Drum is the applicant. Notices said public hearing is published in the February 6th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. The applicant, Scott Drum, has requested an amendment to the Northfield Village planned commercial development, which is located at the southwest corner of West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road. PCD zoning was approved by the city council in 2005, and was amended in 2016 to allow a single-story self-service storage facility and a multi-tenant commercial structure on the property. The applicant now wishes to amend the PCD for a second time to allow two multi-tenant commercial structures and a threestructure self-service storage facility. The primary storage structure would be two stories in height and would be internally accessed. This is different from the plan approved in 2016, which showed only single-story structures. Surrounding zoning includes RS10 to the north, RS15 to the west and south, and RM16 to the east. The request appears to be consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 Land Use Plan, which designates the site as appropriate for neighborhood commercial. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item on January 10th. I believe four citizens spoke at the public hearing, and their concerns included the height of the storage building and the massing, as well as the potential increase in traffic that this development could generate in the area. The Planning Commission voted five to one to send this item to you with a favorable recommendation. And I do want to point out that the pattern book that was sent to you last week showed a six-foot fence between the subject property and the residential properties to the south. At the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant agreed to increase the height of that fence to eight feet, so just make that note. Rob Mulchen from SEC is here to talk more about the request, and staff can answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the city council, and Rob Mulchen, SEC, here tonight on behalf of Mr. Scott Drum, in regards to the amendment to Northfield Village of Planned Commercial Development. Give you a little background really quickly in regards to where the site is. As Donald alluded to, we're on the southwest corner of West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road. As you can see by this latest aerial photo, the site is pretty much undeveloped at this time. As I said, it's mostly grass areas with a few pockets of trees. There's an existing one structure on the property. It's an old church that's abandoned at this point in time, hasn't been used for a number of years. Looking back upon this, as Donald alluded to, the original plan came through in 2005. In 2016, we came back with an amendment to it, to put in a storage facility and an empty lot, which we had commercial elements that are part of this booklet as well, for the two lots we're looking to propose besides the storage at this time. The original lot configuration from 2016 had a, two lots. The one lot was left vacant and unused at this time for user in the future. The storage facility itself, the 2016 plan, was a number of buildings that coalesced at about 65,000 square feet. They're all one-story buildings on that side. They also allowed for all masonry exteriors, and also buffers and fences along the perimeters with the residential properties to screen the development away from the existing properties itself. Moving forward to today's request on that side, as you can see, the plan today is looking at making three lots instead of two. Two lots that are on the corner, and then the middle lot are being left unused at this point in time. We have a list of uses that are appropriate for that. We'll discuss that in a little bit. But the main component is the storage lot on the left-hand side of the property. We're looking at 100,000 square feet of self-storage on this site. This will be a combination of one and two-story buildings. We're gonna still continue using all masonry-type product along the exterior, along the periphery of the property, along with buffers and fences for screening between the development in We're also proposing a couple infrastructure improvements. As you can see, the first infrastructure improvements on West Northfield Boulevard, we're gonna relocate the existing median cut to better allocate ourselves with access on West Northfield on that side. So that's one of the improvements on there. The other improvement will be to Sulphur Springs. We're gonna go ahead and start, as part of Murfreesboro's 2040 Plan, the thoroughfare plan calls for Sulphur Springs to be widened to a three-lane configuration. As part of this development, we'll be incorporating the first segment of that as from our property line back to the intersection with Sulphur Springs and Northfield, incorporating a three-lane configuration, so we have proper term language at the intersection itself on there. Regards to the building designs itself, the two buildings that are along the periphery, which are self-storage buildings, will be one-story in nature. They'll be roughly about 13 feet in height to the top of the roof line on that. The two-story building, which is the main focal building in the center of this, will be two stories on that side. The vertical architectural elements of the facade will help articulate the building so that it breaks up into these long walls, so it doesn't look like it's just a one-piece character. And we'll also have a very strong architectural base, and we'll also have varied roof lines to help with that articulation of the architecture. This is a view of the building looking from the property on the north side of West Northfield. As you look back into the property, as you can see the two-story configuration of the main building there itself. On the right-hand side of the property, as you come in off of West Northfield, you can see there's two architectural elements there. The building on the left, the corner of the main building, two-story building on there on the left-hand side of this image, is the leasing office and entrance to the enclosed storage facility in the two-story element. And the right-hand side is just a more of a decorative architectural element to help make it feel better from a streetscape standpoint. Again, this is the actual two-story building. A little closer up image, you can see the differentiations in our architectural styles and materials, and our varying roof lines to help articulate the architecture in regards to creating a better street presence. Materials for the buildings that stand up, what I talked about was primarily gonna be masonry-type products, brick, stone. We'll have some evis detailing, so we'll be minimizing the amount of evis in regards to that. Cast stone, pilaster caps, pre-finished metal copings, and metal trim and soffit areas and windows as well. These are the four different elevations of the building itself, the main two-story building in the center of the property. And as you can see, the image on the top is the actual image that we've been seeing here in regards to what you see from West Northfield Boulevard. The second image down is actually the elevation, which is the eastern elevation, which is the elevation that abuts to Lot 2 of this development. So this is the, more or less, the elevation that you'll have from the neighboring piece on Lot 2 on this development. The third image down is what the rear would look like. So if you're on the south side of the property looking in, this is what you'd see as an elevational element on that side. And the fourth one down, of course, is looking from the west back towards the east. This will be what you see from that direction on that side. Again, some of the, this is the, this is the one-story building that's along the periphery. As you can see, again, all masonry exterior along the backside, so these, the masonry wall that you see there in the middle is what is exposed to the neighbors next door. But between that and the adjacent property line is a Type C buffer, so you'll not only have the architectural materials of the building itself, which will have a very, you know, 15-foot, or 12-foot wide, Type C buffer with evergreen planting rows in there as well to help buffer and screen the development from the existing homes. And the lower image is more or less what you'd see as you would in any typical storage facility, the roll-up doors in regards to getting into the storage units. That would be just an internal view. You'd never see that from the street or from any adjacent properties. This is a composite image showing more or less what you'd see from the western and southern boundaries in regards to the one-story element in front of the two-story element. So you can see the two buildings more or less composed back-to-back in regards to this view here. So you can see that first-story brick element, and then the second story, the two-story element of the main storage facility in the backdrop. We did a couple variable looks in regards to visual sightlines, in regards to what it would look like from the back of the residences. So, as you can see in the northern portion up here, that would be, if you're looking from Elliott Drive. So this is on the, this is looking from Elliott Drive back towards the north into the site. So, as you can see in the, in the upper portion of this image here, the sightline for the, from that residence is along the backside. If you were standing at the back porch, looking over top, the one-story facility, this would be the two-story element here on the backside. You're roughly picking about five feet of that upper store, of that upper second story on that side. Next is, the next vision down here is looking from the west in regards to those backyards on that side. So as you can see, on that western side, looking over top that one story, you're looking at a roughly about eight foot of exposed, exposure of the facade of the two-story building. And then the bottom picture, again, is another view as regards to topographic changes along the southern side. You can see that the vision triangle actually moves further up the facade to where you're down to about three foot of vision of the actual two-story facade on the internal portion of the two-story building. As I alluded to, we will be incorporating a Type C buffer along the entire perimeter of the west and the south as part of this development. Lots 2 and 3, the buffer and fence as part of that property along the southern portion there, that will be installed with Lot 1. So from day one, the entire property will have a landscape buffer. And part of that buffer on the type, on Lot 1, 2, and 3, as you can see the yellow line in there, that's the eight-foot tall fence that we've talked about in regards to that.
Ron, not to interrupt you, but on the page prior to that, it refers to the PVC buffer fence, and it says it's six foot in height.
That's the one that Donald was talking about. We even had a typo in there, so it's supposed to be eight foot. So the yellow line there, as you can see, extending from the southern one-story building all the way across Lot 1, 2, and 3, back towards Sulphur Springs, that would be the eight-foot tall fence along that side over there. Well, foundation plantings, of course, along the building, also incorporating the screening of the parking and any trash facilities as well from the periphery of the property. Again, this is what we're looking at. We're not looking at doing a white PVC fence, we're looking at doing more of like a wood texture, wood-colored PVC fence to help kind of minimize the look and kind of blend in with the scenery in regards to that Type C buffer with our neighboring properties. The fence will be on the inside of the property, and the buffer will be between the fence and the neighboring properties. So the neighboring properties will see the green Type C buffer, and then the fence will just be a secondary element to help bolster that periphery buffer as the vegetation grows in, and then any headlight action as well on those other two properties develop out. These are just some of the types of landscape materials we're looking at utilizing. As I alluded to, lots 2 and 3 currently are just shown as lots. We don't have any users at this point in time, but in your pattern book, you have a list of types of uses that were considered allowable for this. These are actually the same types of uses that we had when the 2016 version of this property. They're low-packed, low-impact types of uses. They offer services to the areas more or less we're looking for. So you're looking at, you know, items such as, you know, a card shop or a flower shop. You're looking at potentially, you know, places like businesses for like weight loss centers and such like that, but also barber shops. So everyday use type of elements that we can utilize in that, in that portion of the community itself.
Nobody in that neighborhood has a weight loss problem. Now, wait, is that, is this specific to the neighborhood right here? I get a little uncomfortable.
Not pointing any fingers, that's for certain. I appreciate your time and consideration of this matter. I'm available for any questions now and after the public hearing.
I got one question. I'm sure it's been addressed, but I apologize if I missed it, or if I just don't know the answer to it. But back in the day, garage bands used to practice in storage units. No chance of this.
If I remember correctly, we had that written in this pattern book in regards to no musical type of playing. There's all, there's a couple, a whole bunch of lists of restrictions in here as to what can and can't go on on the property and that. And I believe music is one. If it isn't, we'll make certain we add that in there.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Marshawn? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this zoning PRD amendment, PCD amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. We'll open the public hearing. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 180Z04 to amend conditions applicable to approximately 5.6 acres in the planned commercial development PCD district located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulphur Springs Road, Northfield Village PCD, 2017-451. Donald, I just have one quick question. Across the street, there's a property, a piece of property that's been undeveloped for some time, but we're showing a site plan. Is that a tentative site plan, or is it?
I'm gonna defer to Matthew, actually, because he has reviewed that, so if, if he can answer.
Because that's, I don't think that's, that's come to us yet.
It has not, hasn't even come to the Planning Commission yet. The owners of that parcel across the street have submitted a plan, like a zoning pattern book to us. As staff, we have not blessed it to move forward to the Planning Commission yet, and I think it's, it was included in there for informational purposes in, in this particular pattern book, but as far as I know, they are on kind of indefinite hold right now as they continue working, trying to figure out what they're going to do with that property across the street. They have intentions of, at some point, coming forth with a, you know, moving forward with a rezoning request, but when that will be, we don't know.
For a little two cents worth on that, you know, the, whenever we're doing a planned development, I always feel a little more comfortable, kind of part of the benefit of a planned development is that we get to see and smell and feel exactly what it's gonna look like. And when we have these empty lots in here, in this one, I start to get a little anxiety about that, that we lose that.
You're talking about the property across the street?
Oh, this one. And so, as that relates to the property across the street, you know, that, having more uncertainty on those corners is gonna be tough for me. So, as you're working with the owners of that.
Yeah, and that property across the street, the request they did submit was as a planned commercial development. So, the specifics of the plan would come back to you. We told them as staff, we told them, we don't feel comfortable at this location with a bulk zoning request. We told them the only way that we thought that commercial may work at that corner would be to submit as a planned development. And so they've done that. We just did not feel comfortable yet with their plan.
I mean, another storage unit, or another couple of blank spaces, as like, like are in this one, I don't think we need to fill the place up with blank spaces and then, and have a lot of question marks on that.
I think a lot of, a lot of the reason why, why, you know, as we met with them, the owners across the street and their representatives, a lot of the reason why they're not moving forward right now is because everything that they were going to do was going to be speculative. And I think they were trying to get a plan, trying to submit a plan in the hopes that someone would develop what they, what they were putting forward. And I think there just wasn't a comfort level on our part that, that, that at some point, they wouldn't be coming back to you guys to amend the PCD. And we're, and we're trying to.
Thank you.
Yeah, as, as many times as we do bring y'all PCD amendments or PRD amendments, there are just as many times as we try to discourage folks from, from coming back to y'all six months after they have something approved.
Matthew, I'm sure you remember too, that we did have a public meeting, a neighborhood meeting, on this particular project and presented it to the neighborhood. There was some concern with what the usage might be, and we pretty much explained that it would be a planned development, not just a zoning change. And so, I think the developer- And so I think the developer understood that. From what I understand, they're getting closer to bringing something back that'll, that'll hopefully fill that need. The, and currently it's residential property. I mean, this kind of would lead you to believe that it's commercial, but it's currently residential.
Right, it's, it's RS-10 or RS-15 right now.
Right, the, got beautiful buttercups on it right now. The property across the street, the real property we're talking about, it, this is one of those properties with a two-story building on it that's going on to a property with, it's got a two-story church building on it already that has been there for about twenty-some-odd years. And, well, it's been, been there twenty-some-odd years that I've lived there. And truly, it's an eyesore and the whole property has not been maintained at all. So I'll assure you that most of the people I've talked to in the neighborhood are very in favor of anything that helps improve this developed property and improves the condition of this property. So that's kind of the feel of, of what's going on, on the property from, from the neighbors that I've spoke with. It's, it's one of those things that I look forward because I can actually see this property from my front porch. And it, I really hope that this PRD is the last amendment we make to it and it comes to fruition. And I, I really hope it passes. The Sulfur Springs Road, something you didn't mention, but I've talked to Matt about it and I think you've agreed to it, that the sidewalk would be extended all the way up to the three-way stop. Not three-way stop, but through the intersection of Sulfur Springs and Kingwood.
Curve.
And, yeah. Yeah, the sidewalk that will, will give the entire neighborhood over there access to Northfield Boulevard and a sidewalk system. So it's, it's, it's a real improvement to the connectivity of the city as far as pedestrian traffic and, and people who might be riding bicycles or whatever. So if, if this comes to fruition, it'll be a tremendous asset to the neighborhood over there, so.
Is that in the form of a motion?
I'll put that in the form of a motion. I move, and, and also, the, there were four people who spoke against this event last time, or this change. And I talked to at least a couple of them. And both of them said if they had seen the plan book before they came and spoke against it, they would have spoken in favor of it. So I, I think that says a lot about how good a project this is. So in the form of a motion, yes.
Yep, second. Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, if you call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McMarlin.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH05 adopted by the City Council on January 5th, 25th, 2018, will conduct a public hearing and consider rezoning approximately 11.32 acres along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive from single-family residential 15 RS-15 district to planned commercial development PCD district Fortress at Blaze Drive. Williams Farms LP applicant notices said public hearing was published in the February 6th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Anthony.
Thank you, sir. The applicant, Williams Farms LP, has requested rezoning from RS-15 to PCD for this 11.32 acre property located at the northeast corner of Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive. The proposed development would include three commercial structures identified as a daycare or office, bank or office, and multi-tenant commercial structure. Those would all line Fortress Boulevard. The development would also include a self-service storage facility located on the eastern portion of the property. And regrettably, Councilman LaLance, this is one that we'll have to come back as we don't have a lot of details on the storage facility in this pattern book. So once they get to that point, they'll need to come back with a revision to their pattern book. The proposed land uses are generally consistent with the commercial fringe district with the addition of the self-service storage facility. The applicant has committed to not allowing certain uses, including auto sales and service, payday loan and cash advance services, and bars. Primary access to this development would be from Fortress Boulevard. At the public hearing at the planning commission meeting, the applicant agreed to add a right-in, right-out onto Blaze Drive and the pattern book that's in your packet now shows that change. Adjacent zoning includes PRD on the north and east and RS-15 on the south and west. Murphysboro 2035 shows this property as appropriate for general residential. This rezoning request obviously conflicts with the land use plan's recommendation and this was pointed out to the planning commission at the January 10th public hearing. The applicant's representative, Rob Mulchen, suggested that this corner, being located at a major intersection, would be more conducive to neighborhood commercial services than residential uses. After discussing the appropriateness of the proposed land uses, the planning commission voted unanimously to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. Rob Mulchen from SEC is here to talk more about the project and staff can answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
Do you need any, again, Mayor, Council, Rob Mulchen, SEC, here tonight to present to you Fortress and Blaze? Get this pulled up. The site as you used, Donald alluded to, is on the northeast corner of the major intersection of Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive. And as you can see in this aerial imagery, to the south of the site is the Blackman Elementary School campus. To the southwest of the intersection is the Blackman Middle School campus and also some of the Rutherford County 911 service buildings on the corner. Across the street on the western side is the unused City of Murphysboro property. And to our north and northeast is the PRD for the Preserve at Indian Creek. As Donald spoke about, the property currently is zoned RS-15 along with all the other properties in relationship to the city property and also the school properties as well. And like I said, the property to our north and northeast is zoned PRD on that side. You have some county off to the farther east on that side. As Donald had talked about, the current land use causes this to be more of a residential-type character. We felt that based on the size and shape of this configuration and also that it is a corner element, that it was more conducive for a neighborhood commercial-type use. So we're talking limited or small-size-scale type of uses as we talked about and we're presenting that's in the plan tonight. There's a couple of quick views of the site as it is today. This is looking for Blaze Drive back towards the north, northeast. So in the background, you can see the existing canopy trees that are associated with Puckett Creek that is along the back portion of the back boundary of our property between us and the Preserve at Indian Creek. It's a view of the intersection that Blaze and Fortress is looking across the intersection back towards the east, towards Blaze Drive as it runs along the northern side of Blackman Elementary School. This is a view of Blaze Drive, more or less looking back towards Blackman Farms on the other side of Puckett Creek. As you can see, the three-lane configuration that's currently installed in that location. This is a view of Fortress Boulevard looking north with the property and we're speaking about tonight on the right-hand side. This is the open space associated with Puckett Creek and also over on the PRD of the Preserve. As you can see, they have an open space with a walking trail and everything else for the residential component on the north side of our development. We're looking at creating four commercial lots, which have the capacity for either commercial, retail, and/or office-type uses on these 11.32 acres. We have no immediate uses at this time. We're bringing forth the plan today to more or less get our entitlements for this land so we can try to see what kind of clientele we have out there in regards to the different types of uses we're proposing. Like I said, the potential uses we're showing on this plan are a bank, a daycare and/or office, a multi-tenant retail commercial-type space. And we're looking at the self-storage facility. You can see there's a larger green area on the eastern side of the property that backs up to Puckett Creek. Setbacks in regards to the buildings, there'll be potentially on this, on these properties, front setback will be no closer than thirty foot. You'll have ten-foot side setbacks between any adjacent property lines, you know, dividing up these individual properties and twenty foot on the rear. We have chosen in the pattern book, there's a list of allowable uses or allowable tenants. We can look into this. These are mostly pulled from the commercial fringe district of the zoning ordinance. These are uses that we feel are low-impact, but are also more neighborhood-type size-scale functions that will help with residential component, but also the school systems and the users in this area. The storage facility that we're talking about tonight is not part of the CF zoning classification and would require a special use permit on that side. Architecturally, we're looking at no taller than thirty-five-foot-tall structures. Again, more or less a one-story-type building. Buildings will maintain a neighborhood-character-type feel so that you more or less blends into the existing neighborhoods that are around it. These are some of the sample images in regards to what we anticipate some of these structures and uses looking like. In the lower left-hand corner, you have a retail mixed use, mixed tenant-type structure, a bank on the lower right. On the upper-left corner of this imagery here, there's a daycare facility. And then on the upper-right-hand side is a self-storage type of facility that's more or less the office space or leasing space. And then the next two images in the lower portion are different imageries of some different types of character fields for architecturally in regards to the storage facility and how they look from the streetscape. Again, primary material will be masonry-type materials, so brick, stone, fiber cement board. Secondary materials such as stucco, tilted-up concrete walls, dry-fit will all be secondary-type materials that will not be the primary materials in those buildings. Regards to the actual site and landscape itself, we're looking at making certain that the landscaping is actually meets and exceeds GDO requirements. So that's more or less, we're going to upgrade the landscaping component to go into this to help really make this corner kind of feel, have a really good character feel that it will utilize the actual GDO requirements for this property. Parking will be no closer than ten feet to the property lines. And any of these parking lots that are along the periphery will be screened either by landscaping and/or a combination of landscaping with birmingham to help mitigate that, that visual look from the surrounding developments. Commercial buildings will have pedestrian connections back from their front doors, back to the sidewalks along Fortress and Blaze, creating a better pedestrian character, especially with residential, residential-type neighborhoods that are around it that any of those that want to venture out to any of these potential future developments that we have in those properties, they're going to be able to walk to those as well and have front door access. We'll also have landscaping five foot wide at the foundations of all structures. With this proposal, we're proposing three different locations. The first one is on the northern portion of this, along Fortress. This will be a full-access drive back onto Fortress. The second entrance, ingress, egress will be a right-in and right-out. That's just the north of the intersection of Fortress and Blaze. And the third, which is what we came out of planning commission with as an addition, will be a right-in, right-out situational turning lane configuration onto Blaze Drive. A traffic study has been completed and is in compliance with what we're anticipating in regards to development. We're also incorporating some monument signage and landscaping and lighting at those entrances and for tenant signage and development signage as well. I appreciate your time and consideration in this development and I'm available for questions now. We're up to the public hearing.
I just have two questions, Ms. Marshawn. Is there a reason, you know, looking at the, the self-storage facility that just came in and knowing that this, any change that y'all bring through would have to come back, but there's tilt-up concrete that's showing in the, the pattern book? What, what would be built out of tilt-up concrete?
It's just an op, we just left that option in there. I mean, that's definitely something we can pull back out. It's, you know, it's just an option. We wanted to leave the option available for, you know, the different types of construction. I wouldn't see that being used in a, in a storage capacity. Those are usually, you know, corrugated metal on the inside, but, you know, the development that we're proposing with this, that the storage facility is backing up to any, any periphery, especially street furniture, to have a masonry-type finish on it.
The two that just popped out to me were the split-face block and the tilt-up concrete. Because I don't, Mr. Anthony, I don't think we have, there was a lot of discussion many years ago when the EMS building was built regarding the split-face block that's out there, but there's not any other on Fortress, is there?
Not, not to my knowledge. I, and I think that the design guidelines, which were recently enacted, are pretty strict on, on what kind of block can be used and where.
Okay.
And so any development here, we're, we're going to hold to the Murphysboro design guidelines that were recently enacted.
I would recommend if we know those two are not permitted, that there wouldn't be any use in having them in the book if we can't put them out there anyway.
I think we can remove those, it wouldn't be a problem.
So what are you talking about removing? Storage?
No, the, the tilt-up concrete and the split-face block.
I thought you said the storage.
Yeah, the architecture stuff.
All right, so, Rob.
Yes, sir.
So we, I would just wanted, to be noted that we talked about this in planning. Right across the street, right down the street, we have a storage unit already. We have two daycares or three daycares within less than a mile. Is there any other thing that we can talk about besides storage units and daycares at this particular site? I think it's a very good site, but I'm, I'm not for putting another storage unit right there. We have approved, in the last two months, we've approved five or six storage units. I just think this is a prime piece of property that we can put something on here that's a lot better.
What we did was, we did amend between planning commission and tonight. We did, we already had the daycare facility listed as the only use on that northern portion of this property. We've gone back and left that as, as an optional sign of things for daycare and/or office-type use on that side. So we did, we did look at that from the standpoint with, with our client in regards to that. In regards to the self-storage, I think, you know, it's, we hear that, you know, we all have seen all these different storage facilities come through. I think, you know, people have asked, you know, you guys will ask in regards to, hey, is, is, do we have a glut in the marketplace? So our client has done his market research, says that there's going to be a need for it. I think, you know, with all the developments happening along Fortress, let alone, you know, the fact of what's going on with Victory Station. We've got townhomes that were approved last year. We've got the potential for apartments that are just down the street that'll be coming in. And then there's more development in regards to what else is going to happen on Victory Station further down the road, more apartments, more residential-type components, that a lot of these people that are moving into these, either temporarily or long-term, need storage facilities in order to handle their access that they can't put in their apartment complexes, especially families that are moving and waiting for a house to be built that temporarily use those facilities to store that stuff until their house is fully finished out so they can, they can move all their stuff in there. So I think, you know, based on market studies, they see that this is a good opportunity for a place to utilize in their storage facility within the area because there's just a lot of growth going on that portion of the corridor, Fortress and 96 right now.
I agree. I agree with, what you're saying, but what I've said all along and the same thing I said at planning is, if we're going to put a storage unit, I'm not for this, this piece of property for a storage unit. And if, if that's what our intent is tonight, is to put a storage unit, I vote against this.
I think, you know, I think there's another bigger-picture thing here to discuss too. And at least put some consideration to, you know, for us is, you know, I'm curious is the, we don't seem to be adding any RS-15. We seem to always just be taking away from RS-15. And I don't know if anyone in the planning staff out there has looked at what our inventory is, but, you know, relative to, you know, how many lots, how many RS-15 lots we have and how many RS-15 lots we keep changing to move away from RS-15, you know, and whether or not that's appropriate, whether or not we want to end up with none one day and wonder why we don't have any RS-15 houses being built anymore, you know? And, and hopefully, we're going to be doing the things that have some demand for that. So, you know, if our land use plan says this is supposed to be residential, I think noted, I, I don't know that I'd want to live on that corner or my house to be on that corner facing out there on, on Fortress or whatever. But, you know, that's, somebody's probably done some market study that somebody would live there. But, you know, why did our planners say that that's an appropriate place for residential? We have, I don't think, a whole lot of lots. And here we are talking about moving this away to build storage units because we've built too many apartments. You know, so there's, there's some ancillary issues that are going along with maybe some of this that are giving me a little pause. But I, I think, again, bigger picture for planning staff would be that, again, here we are with a planned development where we don't have certainty. And I, you know, maybe we should defer this till we have a little more certainty. I mean, I'm not against doing something here and maybe some commercial makes sense. I just wonder if, whether or not we should have a little more certainty.
If I can, Councilman, to address the RS-15, I think all the zonings that you see would not preclude an RS-15 lot whenever we're going to smaller lots. What you're seeing there is the price of land dictates that you've got to have smaller lots. The market generally indicates that people want less yard and more house. And so they would rather have the smaller lot and a larger house rather than the larger lot. I know Puckett Station has some lots in it that were larger just because it was along the creek for the most part. But we are not seeing that as a market trend by and large. And I think that's why you see that going the other way. Most of the residential zoning would not preclude an RS-15 lot if, if that's what somebody chose to build, though. As far as this, this design, the uses that are outlined on page 16, with the PCD, we have to give a cons, we, we have to give some kind of concept plan. And so in meeting with staff early on, they specifically requested uses that were low-traffic generators that would have peak times that were not in coincidence with the school. And so those were the items that we tried to represent on our current concept. We understand that. We understand that some of those will likely not be what's built there in the end, and so you may have to have a, you may see a PCD, but we have to show something and give some general outlines. We are certainly open for any user. We, we feel like commercial is a good use. It's a neighborhood commercial node, much like the last project. You see a lot of residential around this. This would keep people from having to drive to our major hubs and our major intersections, and we, we are certainly open to different uses. We're merely looking for, say, a commercial entitlement that says, yes, we, we like, we are supportive of a commercial use here. You may have to bring us a specific plan in the, in the future, so we can go out and market to those people that this is commercial property.
Yeah, just to clarify on my, my comment, from a planning perspective, I think that maybe part of the reason that the pricing has gone the way it's gone is because we might have gotten out of whack on our mix a little bit. You know, I mean, what's driving the price of land up is not the people developing it for, for lots. It's more doors typically, and so that's affecting our capability to have RS-15 lots. And, you know, look, market studies may show what they were, but most people I talked to would rather have a little bigger yard rather than no yard at all, and they probably just can't afford to, to build one these days, you know? I mean, we got an acre lot, so what I'm trying to do is avoid bringing that upon ourself, and, and I guess I'll be a little curious as to know why the, you know, our, our planners told us this ought to stay residential in our land use map, but I can't really answer that.
Let me speak to some of this on, from a planning commissioner's standpoint. We, we look at it as, well, let me quote our former vice mayor, Doug Young, on this, and I heard him say this so many times, "This is not the corner where I would build my dream home." And this corner, when you look at the traffic flow on this corner and the traffic that's there, it's really not conducive for residential use. So I think that is the, the reason that I would say I could support it. Also, for the same reason that I just supported the warehouse or storage building on Northfield, there's not very many commercial projects that you're going to put on this property that will create less traffic and less noise and less impact on the community than a storage building. If there's nothing moving, it's generally quiet, and there's very few people that go visit their stuff on a daily basis. So it's, it's not like a grocery store or something that might have a tremendous amount of traffic. Because it's across the street from a school, and this main roadway is, is the drive that's used primarily for the Blackman Elementary School, it's, it's, it really makes good sense that this property be used for something that has very low impact on that traffic situation that already exists. So, so I think there's a lot of pluses to, to this project that's proposed. I, you know, we can't unring the bell, and, and the apartments have already been built, and there's this massive amount of people out there. If there wasn't demand, they wouldn't be investing their money into it, and if, if there turns out there's not demand for it, I'm sure the building could be reused for something else. So, you know, it, it looks like a desirable building plan as far as what's being presented. I don't think it's unrealistic to say that it'll probably change before it's actually built, but because I, you know, the, the last one, I think we've seen three or four changes on the PCD. So, it, I think that there's an opportunity here for some improvement over time, maybe, and maybe some restrictive covenants put on the property if somebody's just absolutely opposed to something that they feel is inappropriate to be next to a school or on a major thoroughfare. But as it currently exists, I think it's something that I could support, and, and I believe it would be an asset to that corner.
Let's go ahead and have our public hearing, and then we'll continue comment after that. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the podium, state your name and your comments. Public hearing is open. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ05 to rezone an area along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive to plant and commercial development PCD district Fortress and Blaze 2017-452. Okay, let's continue discussion.
I agree with Eddie. I think this is driven by this piece of property a lot, and it, if it was going to develop as RS-15, it had plenty of opportunities to develop as RS-15. The low impact of, of the area because of the elementary school right across the street, I just, I think it's appropriate and, and as low an impact on the neighborhood as, as we could expect for some, this property to, to develop, so.
I'm good with a commercial lot, I'm just not good with what we're talking about putting on the property. You know, if we can have some amendments in there on what we can put on that property, I'm good with that.
Well, your point is good about the, the impact, the traffic impact, that's for sure. I mean, I go to my storage unit sometimes, and there's nobody else in the whole place, a lot.
I, I think I, the thing, looking at this, if you go across the overall, I think that's overall creek there, is that right? Puckett? And you've got, you know, the townhomes where, you know, in creek, so I do think traffic-wise on Fortress, comparing what could go here as far as townhomes or something else, that this is definitely from a residential side, the impact is, is minimal. There's a good property owner across the street, too.
City, the city.
City. There's no other questions or comment, I move for approval.
Yeah, I, I hope that the developers continue to work and look at opportunities that might be available as far as daycare and stuff like that, but I'm going to go ahead and second the motion.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 18RPH09 adopted by the Murphysboro City Council on January 25, 2018, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending the Murphysboro City Code Appendix A zoning dealing with distilleries, planning staff applicant 2017-18 notices said public hearing was published in the February 6, 2018, issue of the local newspaper.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, council members. I'm Marina Rush with the Planning Department. It's nice to meet all of you tonight. This evening, it's a proposal to the zoning amendment, zoning ordinance Appendix A. The zoning ordinance amendment proposes modification to the text for three things. The first is to establish a definition for land use alcohol, alcoholic beverage manufacturing within the city of Murphysboro. That definition defines it as alcoholic beverage manufacturing includes brewing, distilling, rectifying, fermenting, and operating a winery for the purpose of producing alcohol, spirits, liquor, wine, and high alcohol content beer that is capable of being consumed by human being other than patent medicine or beer, as defined by Tennessee Code Section 57-5-1. It also includes accessory activities, which may include aging, storage, bottling, packaging, shipping, office functions, wholesale sales, retail sales, and tasting facilities. The second part to the amendment is to establish this use within Chart One, and includes the zoning district heavy industrial as permitted by right and set specific standards for that use within the Chart One footnotes. The footnotes provide specific development standards to help ensure that this type of land use is compatible with adjoining neighbors and adjoining uses. The third part of this zoning ordinance establishes parking standards for this particular use, and any accessory uses that are developed with it would be added to that particular parking standard, so it's a cumulative number. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on January 17, 2018, and voted unanimously to forward, to forward a favorable recommendation to the city council, and at that meeting, no one spoke for or against proposed zoning amendments. I'm happy to answer any questions if the council so chooses.
Okay, we'll need to open the public hearing to consider this zoning amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
My name, excuse me, my name's Patrick Banker. I live in Thistle Downs, where the proposed distillery is going to be built. Among the multitude of reasons...
Can you state your address, please?
Yeah, 2926 Lightning Bug Drive.
Okay.
Along with the multitude of reasons that we'll be bringing up at the next meeting, one of the main reasons that we're against this distillery being built, again amongst many others, is that we've been lied to basically since day one about the facts of this facility. At the first facility, excuse me, at the first meeting in September, we were told the barrel houses would be 40 feet high, then at the second meeting, they were told they would be 50 feet high.
Mr. Baker, I hate to interrupt you, but this is just for the zoning ordinance. This is not about, it's not about...
The problem is, we don't know what the zoning is going to be. We don't know any of the facts of what's actually been happening.
Okay, but if, if you would keep your comments to the zoning ordinance and not to any prospective thing that may be coming forward, because we've not heard that, this body has not heard anything that has to do with a potential distillery, we're just dealing with a zoning ordinance that has to do with this.
Okay, well, we're opposed to it.
Okay.
We, at first, didn't mind if there was going to be a distillery in the, in Murphysboro, we just didn't want it in our neighborhood, but now, based on the facts I was going to give you just now, we don't want it at all, because we don't even know what we're going to get, we don't know any of the actual facts of what it's going to be. Things have changed multiple, multiple times in just four months, and along with that, it's going to be built literally in the back of a residential neighborhood, where Mr. Smotherman just made a whole argument about how something that has that much traffic shouldn't be built in a residential neighborhood. So we, as a neighborhood, are completely opposed to this, and we hope that you guys will not let this, let this pass.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Sean Erdman. I live at 2919 Junebug Drive. In relation to the ordinance, I understand that the ordinance could be citywide, so it's not necessarily just a distillery next to my neighborhood, but anywhere in the city. And I would actually express the same concerns that you'll probably hear eventually. I would just ask that if there was a possibility of an amendment, that a distillery could not be next to residential neighborhoods within so many miles, yards, feet, something of that nature, because there are concerns such as, it's called whiskey fungus, there's traffic concerns, noise, light pollution, all those concerns that go along with the commercial industry. So if, if we pass the ordinance, I would just ask that there would be an amendment that would remove that commercial entity away from residential entities, still within the city limits, in an area that is intended for commercial use, heavy commercial use. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18O09, amending Murphysboro City Code Appendix A zoning, Section 2, interpretations and definitions, Chart One and Chart One endnotes, uses permitted by zoning district, and Chart Four required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use pertaining to alcoholic beverage manufacturer, 2017-810.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
By voting on this zoning, this doesn't mean voting on having a distillery out there, right? We're just voting on zoning.
Correct.
Has nothing to do with the distillery.
Just a, just a, an endnote to the ordinance, correct? Mr. Tate.
Yeah, that's correct. It's creating a zoning classification, that's all it's doing.
But it has nothing to do with the distillery right now? Just the zone?
This is the zoning ordinance itself that allows it to be done in a specific area, it's zoned a specific way.
There's a couple of figures in here, I'd like some, a little bit of information as to where we got them. When it says, "Structures related to alcoholic beverage manufacturer, including bottling, storage, shall be no less than 75 feet from property line and no less than 250 feet from any residential structure on a residentially, or, yeah, residentially zoned property." Where did those figures come from? Where, where did we get those numbers?
The 75 feet is consistent with an industrial type of use for a setback, and the 250 feet is something that I, we saw consistently with many other zoning ordinances in Tennessee jurisdictions, that there was a minimum standard separating the alcohol manufacturing facility from an adjoining property. So we do have that, something similar in our Chapter Four, for onsite consumption, there's minimum distances, so likewise for manufacturing, we established a minimum distance between here and a, and a property line.
So, well, the 250, is that from door to door or structure to structure, or what is that?
That's a good question. It's from the exterior wall of the manufacturing building to the property line.
Okay. What was the zoning in place for, you know, we've got a brewery that's looking to come in in the bottoms area, and then we've got a brewery that's already technically in the bottoms area.
I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Blomley on other properties in the city. HI?
The one that was looking at the bottom.
Okay, Donald knows, he's their bottoms expert, so HI.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to have clarity in my mind, that that's not what we're voting on, because I just definitely need more information as far as, it is still recomeing, because I have concerns for the value of the homeowners, I have concerns for safety, and I also have concern for possible health issues, that I just want to do more research on. So I just wanted to make sure.
There's no other comments, I move for approval. Motion second. Ms. Wright, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now consider adoption of Resolution 18R05, establishing payments in lieu of taxes for the Murphysboro Electric Department for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Mayor, this is something we do annually, where the electric department pays us in lieu of being on our tax roll. I think Mr. Minnet is here with Ms. Williams and might want to make a comment or two.
We love big checks.
Mr. Minnet, I think you said you may do the PowerPoint presentation you did yesterday, the Power Board, that you may give that to us tonight, is that right, Eddie?
If y'all've got a spare 45 minutes, I'll be happy to...
No, you gotta, you gotta condense that 45 minute speech you gave us yesterday to three minutes.
I've heard it might have been a little bit long, but we were, we were reporting on our accomplishments for the past year, and we feel like we had quite a few positives, so it, it took a little while to report it.
That's a good thing.
But Mayor McFarland, members of council, I'm pleased to be here tonight. As Melissa said, the, annually, we pay in lieu of tax payment, our board considers a financial condition of the power system in accordance with TCA 7-52-301 and our power contract that, and we, our board approved these amounts of payments, tax payments as our fair cost of a share of government to be borne by the electric department. So we're, Mr. Cromley asked me to bring him a big check, so we've got a check for $3,147,659.66.
Of which they've been paying on monthly already.
That's the city's, that's the city's portion of the, of the tax equivalent payment, and other taxing districts will, will receive, the county will receive money as well, in the amount of $913,836.67. So, good luck cashing this check, but if you want to try to present it tomorrow, have at it. So, but we, I think we're, I think that makes us the largest taxpayer in the city.
You may be, I'll have to look and see.
Mr. Minnick, I wanna, I wanna publicly just say I had the opportunity to talk to Chairman Hardisty today and he was, you know, telling me about some of your employees that made comments yesterday at the Power Board meeting and, and just the miraculous change in morale at MED and the things that have happened under your leadership this past over a year. And so publicly just wanna tell you how proud that we are of MED, the strides that y'all have taken, you know, to, to continue to be a valuable part of this city, so we, we thank you for what you and your employees are doing.
We appreciate the comments, Mayor, and, and we've got a great group of employees that, that make it all possible, so got a great staff. Our people rise to the occasion when they need to and then very proud to represent that organization.
You know, and, and folks, the other, the other night when the fire in our neighborhood, the house in our neighborhood caught on fire, something that you don't take into account that as the police officers were there, the firefighters were there, the EMS officers were there, shortly thereafter here comes the MED workers who are coming and taking the meter out to make sure that the house doesn't have power, so, you know, it takes a team and y'all are a big part of it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, as a member of the Power Board, I, I wanna commend PD in this wonderful year that you've had and, and I know you gave the presentation yesterday that was, was quite lengthy, but the, but, but that's because you have so many achievements and you guys have done a phenomenal job this last year and, and for me personally, I, I wanna thank you for everything that I've seen you guys do. And, and more than that, my electric bill went down a hundred dollars this month, I just got it today, so we're going in the right direction.
I'm glad to hear they're going down. We've heard a lot about them going up.
I was gonna say. How'd you do that, Eddie?
No, the, the electric department bills you based on the amount of electricity you used and I got smarter. There was a, there was a thermostat adjustment that took place at my house and cocooning started taking place when it was really cold, so it all worked out.
Undercover.
PD, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much.
Laurie, we appreciate you as well. Thank you for the work y'all are doing. All right, have a...
Wait, wait, we need a motion.
I'm sorry, we need a motion to adopt Resolution 18R-05 to be able to accept the payments in lieu of taxes.
That's an easy one.
Easy, motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I was getting excited about recommending to you to name Ms. Susan Emory McGannon to the Board of Directors for the Rutherford County Library System. I can tell you, many of y'all know that Ms. McGannon was our past city attorney and if she had a passion within this city, it was the library, so she will ably serve Rutherford County and the city of Murfreesboro on this board.
We need a motion for that?
Please.
So moved.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any beer permits?
No, sir, not tonight.
Any statements?
No, sir, not tonight.
Take good night, no beer, no statements. All right, any other business to come before the city council?
Mayor, I think with, in light of the things, the tragedy that took place in Florida this last past week, I, I think it's, it's time that, I was talking to Mr. Cromley before the meeting and I understand that we currently have one officer per school and, and I wanna compliment our school system on being very proactive on, on securing our schools and making sure that they're safe places for the students to come and get an education. But I, I think that, you know, in light of the, what has taken place, that it's time for us to seriously consider looking at the police department for having an officer in each school. And I think that would be a tremendous improvement to the security of the schools and, and, and of course it's ongoing and, and I think we should continue to look at it, but, but I think it's very important that we at least make sure that we've got all the schools covered with at least one officer.
Yeah. Where, yeah, where are we now?
There's, there's only one school that shares.
Two schools.
Yeah.
So, everybody, everyone else...
Basically spending a half a day in each school.
School, yeah. Yeah, so the, the schools, you know, just for the public, we, we have our schools extremely well-covered. It's funny, we had this exact conversation, when did we have it, Mr. Cromley? Last, last week, maybe?
Last week, almost immediately after the tragedy in Florida.
And I think y'all met today on this as well.
Chief Bowen and Dr. Gilbert met this afternoon to begin the discussion about how many, the right types, the right times, where those questions.
That's, that's good to consider and also, I know this is a big money item, but, you know, they have the SROs in the school and that's fabulous, but I don't know if you've been to the schools, but once they buzz you in, I mean, you come in and you go to the office to sign in or tell what you want. In the future, I'd like to see us have some kind of metal detector because once you buzz somebody in, you still don't know if they have a weapon with them or anything. They, you know, they can come into school and be fully loaded with a weapon. So, I think we need to look at maybe metal detectors entering the schools. And speaking of that, sometimes I get a little nervous up here and I'd like to see us have some metal detectors on both of these doors. No, Officer Lee, you do a great job, but you never know. People come in here upset sometimes and you never know what they have.
Knowing several of the council members that are sitting up here, I feel pretty safe.
I got you. I got you. I'm safe now.
All right, what we, I think is good...
I think there is being some security concerns with City Hall and, and with other areas that are already in discussion, so I, you know, you know, I think that raise, anything like this is raising the discussion and, and it's certainly worth consideration and, but leave it to Dr. Gilbert and our staff to...
Before Dr. Gilbert got Chief Bowen, we had Chief Bowen and Chief Hook looking at this building, particularly with the impending departure of police to Highland Avenue and others. We had Ms. Gaddis from the library with us. The concerns we see on security in the building are repetitive, but they seem to have stepped up recently and so we've asked for the department, for Police Department to provide us with some resources, first to do a review of the two buildings' security and then to do some training with our folks who deal frontline with people.
Yeah, and, and, and not that we haven't already been proactive because I know in the remodeling of the building recently, the finance department was, went from what, what I would say was close to an F as far as security to pretty much an A now, I think. So, it, the, it, it's not that we haven't been acting positively with our concerns in the past, but I think we need to continue forward with anywhere that we might be able to find a weakness.
And I think what's good, all due respect to neighboring communities, they can handle press releases or whatever that they wanna send out. I, I really like that, you know, after talking to Dr. Gilbert, that, you know, we're gonna keep our security protocols and how we handle things internal. I think it's safe just to let our residents and families know that everything is being done at all times, at all measures to make sure that all of our kids and our families are safe, but we will make sure that those security protocols are handled internally as opposed to, you know, publicizing those to let people know what we may be or we may not be doing. I think it's safe to let our security professionals handle that. But internally, if y'all have discussions that you wanna absolutely talk about, please discuss those and we can make sure that, you know, we don't miss anything at any time, but that way we can stay on top of it.
Where are we on the bridge naming?
We've got enclosure on that.
Well, well, I, I, you know, the, the bridge, I think that we're, we're gonna have to discuss as a council. I had a great conversation with Mr. Jack Wetherford and I think I scanned in and sent you all the, the notes on that and as a matter of fact, I think the sign is up there right now, but, yeah, that, that bridge was named, we're still doing the research to find out exactly when it was named, but many, 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 many years ago, that bridge was originally named Al Mifflin Bridge. So, we need to have the discussion as a council. We're really not talking about, in my opinion, the naming, we're gonna be talking about if the council goes into that, to actually a renaming. And so, I assume none of y'all want to make a full-time Bridgie McBridgeface name except for maybe one day, but...
That's probably a good sign.
Yeah.
People first is our suggestion.
What's that?
People first is our suggestion.
That's a good, that's a, yeah.
I, I talked with Ron Belashandry yesterday about the construction on the bridge as well and he said by March 15th that we should have all the paving completed and, and the bridge completely completed. So, even though it's operational now, anybody who uses it, kinda doesn't take long to figure out that there's still some deficiencies, but those are supposed to be corrected by March 15th.
Yeah, and, and I want, and there's times I think that we need to say when we do things really well and times when we don't as much and I want to apologize, there's things that we have control over and sometimes things we don't have control over and we've not had control over how that the bridge has been finished, but I wanna apologize to the residents that you're having to deal with, what you're dealing with on the paving and those things out there. We are on top of it, our transportation department's on top of it, but sometimes things are out of our control and we're pushing as, as fast as we can with the, the contractor.
And, and not to defend the contractor, but the asphalt company has been closed.
Correct.
And so there was no asphalt for him to pave with, so...
Yeah.
Understanding that, I mean, and they couldn't open up for two weeks for him to do his project and then close back up. It's a seasonal thing, so when they open up, they gotta stay open, so e- even, even not defending the contractor, but, but he had things that were outside his control as well.
Mr. Minnick can, since he's here, can attest how cold it's been as far as asphalt being to, been pretty cold, hasn't it?
We have 20 cadets in January loading bricks in five and a second days.
Pretty cold.
And a 137-hour period, but 133 hours of loading bricks.
All right, any other discussion? All right, thank you everyone for coming tonight, we'll stand adjourned.